Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting. The city thanks you for attending and being part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and detailed agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco website, which is www.pasco/qua.gov. City council meetings are televised live on Spectrum Cable, Channel 191 in Pasco and Richland, and are streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. If you have any mobile devices with you tonight, we ask that you turn them off so that the workshop is not interrupted. And so tonight, we have a workshop and this is a chance for the council to work through some items that we have for discussion. There will be no public comment tonight and I'm also seeing in the in the crowd here that there are signs and we're going to ask you to please be respectful and keep those signs down during the meeting. We understand you want to be heard and I think you will be and you are being heard. But we just ask that you please be respectful and keep the signs down during the meeting. So with that said, I'd like to have a roll call, please?
Alvarado.
President.
Rahas.
President.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
President.
Milm.
President.
Roach.
President.
And Serrano.
Here.
Alright, everybody's here, would you like to please stand and join me in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they would like to report today? Mr. Milm?
Yes, on Friday, I did attend the Klima Steering Committee, which some good discussions, seems like the whole sister city with the Klima is on track. The city was talking about the different goals, the committee was talking about different goals that we have and was looking good. And then also, I also attended the Pasco Chamber Lunch today. And they had history on Pasco and the chamber and I learned something new that Pasco advertised itself in the early 1900s as the queen city of the plains. It was actually really interesting to see the whole history of Pasco and all that, so, good time.
Perfect. Anybody else have anything to report? If not, then we'll get right to business. Item number four, we're going to have an update on animal shelter. Mr. Zach?
I will kick it off and then Mr. Rakai will will jump into it. So, good evening, Mayor Council and to let you know, the primary objective tonight is to update council and matter of fact, all the councils, Kennewick, Richland and Pasco. Tonight's our turn in Pasco, we were at Richland last week, we'll be at Kennewick tomorrow night. About the animal control shelter project. As we were preparing for this presentation, a few weeks back, working with our key staff and other, and our other cities, we're kind of come to the realization, a lot of faces have changed and so there's even maybe some understanding about how the Animal Control Authority, which is the partnership between the three cities, even works. What some of the responsibilities are of the cities under that agreement and and the contractor and then the shelter itself is something we've been talking about, I think first identified in 2009 as itself being an issue. Some of the deficiencies at the shelter to 2016, when the, when the three cities began discussing its replacement in earnest and updates to the ILAs over the next couple of years, as well as the design phase we've recently gone through. So there's, there's lots been communicated, also a lot of misperception out there and we've spent a lot of time working with, with partners, trying to communicate with them, where we're at, as well as other members of the community. What the situation is and trying to understand as well and learn from them and what they're providing to us is information that's actionable that we can work on as part of our shelter planning. So we're going to spend some time again on the history, the operational parameters, the contractor and ACA responsibilities, and then we'll get into the status of the project and the next step. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Rakai. I did want to acknowledge, I think we have City Manager Rents from, there she is, from Richland in the audience with us tonight, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zabel and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening, Zach Rakai, ACS Director. Why are we here this evening? As Mr. Zabel had stated, really go over history of the Animal Control Authority, roles of the authority and the contractor, take a look at the current shelter, do some operations and some statistics, a history of the design project and then kind of dive into some community concerns. So, the purpose of the Animal Control Authority was an interlocal agreement. In 2005, established Richland, Pasco and Kennewick, sort of as a joint venture or three-pronged venture to address animal control and sheltering in the community. Purpose of the agreement was really to create a management committee, sharing of services and responsibilities in order to enable efficiencies and cost savings for animal control sheltering operations. Establishing an operating jurisdiction, it was on a rotational basis, but soon after this was created, by virtue of having the shelter within the Pasco city limits, it was the city of Pasco as the operating jurisdiction. And while it got a cooperative agency, a cooperative group to do this important community need, it really did preserve the, each city's ability to establish its own additional, individual standards, regulation and fees. So, basic service?
Yes, sir. Hopefully, we can make this interactive, but so Pasco is currently the operating jurisdiction. In the event that, let's say, Kennewick or Richland had a location that was closer to ready-go, is there an option to move it to one of those locations? Yeah, if I could address that. So, the current interlocals specifies Pasco as the as the administrative jurisdiction or the operating jurisdiction. That would need to be renegotiated and it certainly could happen. I will note though, that the other city, we have similar agreements for emergency communications where Richland is the lead. We do it with Metro Drug Task Force and Bi-Pen, which is a, which is a records, police records joint effort where Kennewick is the lead. So we try to kind of share some of those joint services for the efficiencies of all three cities. I appreciate that. I'm just thinking, you know, we've spent, it's been about a decade since this thing's been studied and we're still no, we are closer hopefully. So, just again, if we could find something that's almost ready-made and it's in another jurisdiction, I see no issue unless we thought it'd be a protracted negotiation of several months or years to get the other cities and that might be the cost of doing business and if it is, then it's good to know that in front.
Okay, thank you. So, basic services of the Animal Control Authority, obviously the regulation aspect, apprehension of vicious, dangerous stray and lost animals, removal of dead animals from public rights of way throughout the region, impounding and boarding of apprehended animals, transfer, foster, adoption or potential euthanasia of unclaimed animals, disposal of remains, enforcement of licensing, and doing what they can for owner notification if there's a found or a surrendered animal, trying to reunite that animal with their owner, working with Identicode, microchipping, that sort of thing. Responsibilities of the Animal Control Authority, really the committee in the three cities is formed to establish the policies of an animal control plan, approve and execute the contracts for services, develop a budget, report to the cities, which is the crux of the bulk of this report this evening, provide a venue for dispute resolution and then obviously that management committee is chaired by the operating jurisdiction, which is currently City of Pasco personnel. Some of the responsibilities of the operating jurisdictions, obviously enforcement, daily enforcement of the rules, regulations, ordinances, providing support services, so the city does provide accounting services, legal services, risk management, personnel management. We do act as the landlord for the shelters, so those duties that are landlord responsibilities, Pasco Facilities is on call to take care of those. We manage any and all contracts with independent contractors for, or other entities for services. Obviously administer the rules and regulations. And as we've stated a couple of times here, it looks like, as I go through this presentation, obviously in 2007, it was established that City of Pasco is the operating jurisdiction. The Second Amendment to this interlocal agreement and it's kind of convoluted up on the, on the screen there, so just to kind of get a brief, we do a one-third partnership for animal enforcement services. The Second Amendment would look at the numbers of animals that come through based upon each city. So, say Pasco had more dogs, Kennewick had more cats, then that pro-rata share, that share of the costs would be in proportion to the number of animals that originated in that city, if that makes any sense there.
Mr. Rakai, to that point, I know that that's a concern that I've heard, I think we went to tour with council members from other jurisdictions to the actual facility and that was one of the concern, they wanted to get those numbers as far as, well, how many do we serve? Because I think they were worried about that proportionality. And so I'm wondering if that's really kind of driven home in this, in this this tour that you're going into the three cities, so that, to make sure that they do know that that's the case? And I think that that, I guess if I were in a jurisdiction that had less level of service, I would be interested in knowing those numbers and so, do we have that data available or is that?
We do have the data available broken out by individual city. We've had that since we've had our current contractor established in April of 2019. Later on in the presentation, I'll have some just basic overview data for all three cities. But it was also requested by Richland City Council, so we'll be breaking out that individual data too. It's actually, it's kind of interesting to see, you know, how the animals came in, where they came from and then where they were, what they call an outtake, so where it was reunited to, where it was adopted to and everything. So yeah, we are getting that, those numbers crunched down in order to better ascertain the costs and the shared costs for this.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing that level of detail. Thank you so much.
Current contractor for the shelter enforcement and shelter services. This was brought in front of Pasco City Council, March 29th, 2019. We did extend it through the calendar year of 2020, last December. Current contractor is the Chiclee Animal Foundation. They are acting as an independent contractor. All persons that are employed at the shelter are employees of the foundation and not a direct city employee. The permitted use of the animal shelter itself should be used for animal control operations and sheltering for the cities of Kennewick, Pasco and Richland. No other purpose unless there's written consent by the Animal Control Authority. Contractor develops a set of written operational procedures related to daily operations, maintenance and upkeep for their responsibility per the, per the contract, all the way up to euthanasia procedures, which are governed by a number of regulations. Obviously, the operational procedures are subject to Animal Control Authority approval and the contractor is accountable for their compliance. Contractor shall, is providing services for animal control enforcement and sheltering for both counties and the incorporated areas for all three cities. The contractor provides telecommunications services, so any phone lines, phone service, phone numbers, internet capabilities. They maintain their own garbage disposal contracts, their own janitorial services within the shelter, security services if needed. Obviously, collect appropriate impound and boarding fees and remit to the city and that, that's once again where it comes into the per-city animal count. Because if there's a fee or a fine that's due to the city of Pasco, you want to make sure that it's associated with a dog that is a case for a Pasco resident. So, the records for that's kept pretty well. Obviously, their primary enforcement is the applicable animal codes for all three cities, taking animals into custody if needed, transporting animals and investigating animal control complaints. There's an extensive scope of services with the contract. The facility is operated and maintained on a 24-hour-a-day basis. If it's outside of a normal operational hours, they are on call. 24-hour, seven-day-a-week accessibility for emergencies, so this would be if law enforcement needs to drop off an animal or if there's an animal control officer on call that needs to respond to a call after hours. Within the building, they shall coip for proper capacity, have a quarantine section, an area for court holds. Court holds could be dogs that are waiting a court case for a vicious dog case, a dog bite scenario. Obviously, provide adequate food and resources. Need to maintain, the contractor is responsible for maintaining the shelter in a clean and sanitary condition, not to permit a public nuisance. Obviously, make all reasonable attempts to reunite the animal with an owner if it's a stray that was found on the street or a case similar to that before adoption, foster, transfer or potential euthanasia. Minimum hold times for a dog, 72 hours. For cat, it's 24 hours, obviously unless age, sickness or injury requires, you know, earlier disposal. For unclaimed animals, an effort for fostering, adoption or transfer should be taken. Those are animals that were not claimed by their owners and they were held in the facility. They can be kept on premises, provided it does not hamper any of our capacity for the main enforcement need for the communities. Maintaining animals beyond this time on the facility is at the expense and responsibility of the contractor. Disposal of unclaimed animals, any unclaimed animals should not be sold for medical purposes or research purposes without express written consent of the Animal Control Authority. There's no agreements in place for that at this time. Where am I? Obviously, could potentially arrange or provide for the humane euthanasia. That's one of their responsibilities as well. Another big responsibility is to encourage community involvement. Manage a foster program to help alleviate overcrowding, provide education to the public. Website management and marketing is key, responsible to obtain all equipment and tools and maintain all records of animals that it handles. And that's also another operating jurisdictional thing. Records requests are handled through the Pasco City Clerk's Office. Really, the contractor is not generally responsible for rehabbing or restoring health to animals that have been injured, neglected or abused beyond the needs of basic sheltering. So, looking into the current facility here, portion of the facility is built in the 50s, portion of it was built in the 1970s, just over 8,600 square feet with a formal capacity of 61 dogs and 88 cats. In addition to the kenneling and animal housing areas, it does have offices for animal control staff, the enforcement officers, general operations of the shelter, shelter staff and the volunteers. Some of the items that have come up, as we've talked over the last year and some of the efforts that have come up with the current facility, the tours that many of the city council members have been on, we've really been putting forth an increased effort while we assess what we're going to be doing as the next project for this. We will address some of that more in detail later on in the presentation as well, but we've replaced sinks and lightings, plumbing fixtures. We've replaced some ceiling tiles that were damaged due to insulation placement that was not known to the city at the time. This was a number of years ago, like probably two or three contractors ago. So, we've been working on replacing some ceiling tiles. While cleaning, keeping a clean sanitary environment is responsibility of the contractor. In December of 2019, the city did address and utilized our janitorial contractor to provide a deep clean of the facility, which included flooring, walls, the air conditioning, HVAC vents and really to help the contractor establish a sort of base point upon which their janitorial operations can go through. Lot of numbers on this, the general statistics here, I'm sorry to throw it to you in this format. We were trying to get this ready and I will go down to January 2020 numbers for the month. We are not seeing 1,300 dogs and cats going through in the month of January alone. As we've seen, we've got typically from, you know, 1,300 to just over 1,500 animals. In 2019, statistics are incomplete because we do not have January through March. We're working on obtaining those from the previous contractor. And then, may I refer to my notes? The shelter took in 119 dogs. Primarily, most of those were strays found in the community and this is for all three cities in the month of January 2020. 117 of those were taken out of the facility. Now, taken out means they were adopted, they were reunited with their owners or transferred to a different facility for holding and adoption. With cats, 90 were taken into the facility and 135 were adopted out, transferred, reunited with the owners and it's a little bit harder to reunite a cat with an owner, but certainly we had a lot more success with the, with the dogs in that aspect there. As for going through the city-by-city stats with the specific income categories and outtake categories, we'll be providing that to this council and all other councils as soon as we can, so. So, just the general budget for operations of the shelter and operations and employment of the animal control staff. We're looking at a total annual budget of $775,624. These base numbers and sort of the initial budget is provided to the Animal Control Authority by the contractor. Staffing makes up the most of that, obviously wages. There are some benefit-eligible employees there and then just over $123,000 in operations and equipment. So, really if you break that down, each city is paying $258,541 per year for animal control and sheltering services. That's billed to the shelter, the shelter bills the cities monthly through the City of Pasco. Each city pays just over $21,500 for this service. There are 16 employees, directly employed with the contractor. There's a director for animal control officers plus an animal control supervisor and then the rest are filled in with, you know, kennel care technicians, customer service personnel. This year's budget for 2020 is a 7% increase over 2019, which enabled the contractor to hire a dispatcher to really help alleviate some of the internal customer service calls. I know a number of council members have been through the facility and particularly on a Saturday, just seeing how busy it was. So, we're hoping that hiring a dispatcher can help with the enforcement, but also with that. Yes, Mayor?
Mr. Rakai, question. So, when, when a dog has been impounded and it finds its owner, there's a process and then there's a fee for that owner to come and, and pick up their, their dog, correct? Is that part of the operations and equipment? Is that the money that comes in, where does that go in this?
The money that comes in would be a fee that goes directly to the cities, because that would be a city ordinance established fee.
So, that's not part of this here?
No, but if there's adoptions that go beyond, so say an animal is unclaimed and that remains on the facility and then you come in two days later and adopt the animal, that goes to the contractor for their needs and a lot of that can, you know, I don't want to speculate on exactly what the contractor, I can only speculate on what the city does, so.
Alright, thank you.
I got a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Serrano.
Do you know what we put into the shelter last year? You had mentioned we did some kind of basic repair slash maintenance. Do you know what that costs?
I can get the specifics on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, we're looking at, trying to invest in a new facility and at a certain point, we're going to have to put so much money back into the old one, right? And there's the cost of limping along. Being a guy in a boot right now, I kind of feel that. But there's the cost of that and then there's the cost of, oh man, this is, this is a huge piece of the pie if we start over, but maybe it catches up with us in addition to providing, you know, health benefits to the folks that are there. I was just, just curious. And then, do we have any idea of an estimated, like whether ops and equipment costs may decrease with, you know, a more functional facility or is that so far out there that we haven't even tried to project that?
I think some of the feasibility studies that were conducted previously that guided the design looked into, you know, efficiencies of operations, efficiencies of cleaning kennel, all the way down to the type of material used on the wall and how easily it works for someone to come through and hose it down rather than someone to hose it down than another person coming in. So, certainly considerations for ease of operations taken in there. As far as tangible costs, we can dig that numbers out for you.
I don't think it's needed now. It's just, I guess, I'm just trying to explore again. There's, there's a large sum that we're looking at potentially investing, but if we can recover a lot of that in efficiencies, it might make sense.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rakai, just real quick here, on this slide here, we're talking about the per-city annual. If I understood your comment earlier, then that's, is that just an average cost? But there's a difference in cost sharing based on actual animal intake. Is that, is that correct? So, can you, can you talk to me about that?
Yes, right now, it's one-third, one-third, one-third. When the new facility is built is when that per-share, per-city proportion gets into place.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the new facility project. As the City Manager Zabel had alluded to in his preamble, in 2009, the shelter need was formally identified by the three cities. Through discussion and various committees with elected officials and staff, commenced a white paper study completed by the consultant. We call it the FLEU study. It was based upon interviews of order 40 stakeholders in the region. This be operations of the shelter, the current operator at that time, among elected officials, stakeholders in the community, volunteers, animal groups. The study includes a number of site assessments in all three cities, including, you know, assessment of the current site, assessment of partnership sites, say with Benton Franklin Humane Society, different open lands areas in all three cities. And reviewed of intake and outcome trends too, that was, the animal shelter was seeing at that time in relation to population growth trends. And basing sort of a program to see that new shelter in 2015 numbers, based upon just the, the building and concept itself would be about $4 million. This prompted the three cities in 2016 to form an interlocal agreement for design and construction of the shelter. This committee was made up of the city managers and it was mainly to determine the most fiscally responsible construction or partnership option to provide new sheltering for the community. It provided that City of Pasco would be the lead agency for the project. The city would provide contract management services through this project, secure monthly progress payments to remit to the other cities, do a final audit of the project. And the main crux of that was to enter into a feasibility study and design project, which was conducted and started. The RFP was issued in 2017 and a feasibility study was picked up. The successful respondent was Meyer Architects out of Kennewick, who did a feasibility study and began a design in conjunction with Shelter Planners of America, who are out of Texas, I believe. This guided the design of the shelter that we have proposed at this date. The shelter design was begun in 2019, or 2018 and finished in summer of 2019. The original site chosen for the shelter was directly to the west of the current shelter. As the cities looked at this, there were some assumed geotechnical issues there, high groundwater. There was also some utility conveyance costs that would add a lot to the project. So, it was determined to move the shelter site proposal to the northeast corner of the Pasco Little League Facility at Boothfields along A Street. It was certainly better visibility to the traveling public. There were easier utility hookups. Once that was completed, the design was completed and our estimates came in at over $6 million for construction cost. Those included not only the building, but we had a design of the building, we had materials specked out. There was also site development costs, utility hookups, permitting, contingency, insurance, the whole gamut. So, that's where we reached that over $6 million number. The estimated cost, as I alluded to before, per-square footage was higher than other notable shelter-type facilities we've seen in this region of the country. The shelter committee is, we value engineered the cost estimates to see if there are any reductions. More in line with similar projects, you see like Spokane County Animal Shelter, which was a retrofit of a current building. Our value engineering statistics came back mainly looking at materials and aesthetics to the building. Do you, do you need concrete block and brick on the outside of the building, on the facade? Or could a different material reduce costs? Looking into the type of tile in the hallway floor, could you use plain white tile instead of tile that would have a dog print, paw print inlaid into it, those sorts of things. Really, that netted about a half million dollar in savings. So, that's kind of what we had seen from there. The committee is also looking into examining another, a whole number of options. If this would be to, to find the funding to build the current shelter design, look into remodels of current buildings, tenant finish of a larger building, improvements there. We're looking at, maybe there's a new design that we can put in place that's a little bit more simple, a little bit more cost-effective to the community, but still meets the need for sheltering. Also looking at partnerships too. You know, discussions with potential partners I've had. We've toured the Benton County Canine Shelter, which is in Kennewick, serves the needs of the county, about 30 kennels over there. Also discussions with Benton Franklin Humane Society about future options there for sheltering as well. So, looking at different partnerships and taking a lot of looks at different angles and different options. So, some of the community concerns, we have a number of people involved with the animal shelter and involved in this effort out in the community. They've been to every city council. Involved in this effort out in the community. They've been to every city council. They've been here before. Um they are here tonight. And uh so kind of abridging some of the questions and and comments that have come in, basically, you know, the shelter's in bad shape. It's unsafe for animals. Staff and the public. The shelter is scheduled for replacement. Uh we're working on the best, most cost-effective option uh at this point. In this November and December, uh city of Pasco, so it was myself, I toured uh the facility with our chief building official. Uh where it monitors the building codes as well as our facility manager. We wanted to see that while there were some um certainly some conditions we were seeing in the shelter. We wanted to make sure that, you know, there weren't any glaring life, safety, structural type issues. Um based upon that review, our chief building official determined that there weren't any uh 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 on his inspection. Um, we did recommend, make some recommendations on upgrades to lighting in the facility. There's some areas where extension cords are being used, where we could, you know, we could easily add an outlet and uh 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 work on that. Um updates to some plumbing facilities as well as clarification of the roles of um, you know, landlord versus contractor. And uh who's responsible for what. Um through that process, we replaced some ceiling tiles. Um we did the deep cleaning as I described before. Uh we are now doing regular inspections and working hand in hand with the shelter contractor. Uh this includes establishing seven days a week on call. Uh we've responded to some Sunday calls for some plumbing issues. Uh we'll be working on a drainage issue with the plumbing uh uh tomorrow morning as well. So really trying to work with what we have right now, because that's what we have right now. While we uh work in earnest to try to find uh good alternatives for the community. Excuse me, another um community concern obviously is the shelter is overpopulated, undersized. Um it is the contractor's responsibility to manage the population within the shelter. Um the animal control authority. Uh will be working hand in hand to to see where we can help to find reasonable alternatives for sheltering partnerships. And I know our contractor's been working on partnerships in the community. Um to take on animals that may exceed the population uh currently in the shelter, work on that. Um, we also heard that the handicap cannot come into the shelter. Um it is an older building. I mean, part of it's done in the nineteen fifties. Part of it's done in the nineteen seventies before a lot of the ADA requirements. Um I will be bringing our our designated Pasco ADA facility or 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 person, personnel through the facility uh shortly. To really see what opportunities we have to address this uh concern, um what we can do and and what we can't do. There's been work with pet overpopulation prevention or POP. There's other community partnerships. Um POP does have a grant for a low-cost spay and neuter clinic. They've identified Pasco as sort of that main center. Of where that would serve the greatest community need. Um low-cost spay and neuter also helps with shelter populations and they become a great partner with the with the current shelter and working on uh some of the animals there. Um they do have an opportunity uh and a grant from the state for a um. To can to build a clinic of their own. Um this is not necessarily tied to the shelter project. It's been talked about that in the community, but. Um it is a need that uh we at the city of Pasco are working on to fulfill their grant contract requirements. Um whether that's looking for a standalone facility they can occupy in the area. Um working on uh leasing of facilities or trying to find bare ground to to help them there. If it does partner with a future shelter opportunity, then that's fantastic, but um really working that uh the 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 POP grant. Is is not necessarily tied to the shelter, but working with them to try to find the best uh means to serve this community need. Concerns with the history of the design, uh obviously we look at the design costs that have come through with the shelter that we've designed and and uh. It's been told we're we're building something too fancy. We're value engineering the project and really trying to see where we can get some cost savings. And and our our art in our alternatives to to build a a facility that functions well for the community. Um but also provides for the efficiency of operations. We were promised a new shelter in two thousand and nine. Well, as we stated before, the shelter need was identified in two thousand and nine. Coordination between the three cities, elected officials, committees and really studying the issue um has prompted us to where we're at uh today. Security and crime was an issue came up, uh particularly at the Richland City Council. I had Pasco Police Department pull two years of crime statistics in that area. Um like any address in the city of Pasco, there are calls. A lot of it's uh for law enforcement assistance on an animal control case. Um or just general conversation. I mean, there are a couple of calls down in the facility. But according my conversations with Pasco PD, this isn't an address that really strikes it as a high-crime, high-volume of call. Type address. Um the Pasco Police Department is well aware of the. Uh uh emotions that surround animal shelters and and uh surrendering a stray or or finding a dog bite case. Um and so they do work pretty well with the animal control officers. Obviously, animal control is a law enforcement capability as well. Um so pulling two years of crime statistics, it's not an an anomaly when it comes to high volume of calls on that address. And then shelter capacity is a huge concern. Um there's been, you know, if you look at the capacity for the the of our current shelter versus the shelter that's been designed. Um there is less capacity for dogs and cats in that shelter. The new shelter was designed really with modern operations in mind, according to the feasibility study. Um there is more administrative space. There's more space for. Adoption interviews, meeting an animal that you want to adopt. Um and really looking at the design of that shelter, based upon the feasibility study, was designed. To promote more adoptions. Um thus resulting in shorter stays for the animals, which, you know, would conceivably result in. Smaller capacity. Uh this is due to location, having a bright facility you'd want to visit. Uh a safe, clean facility, wanting to get an animal out of there. So that's kind of where we're at with the uh shelter capacity there. Again, with the current design, um some cities are holding up the construction project. Well, all three cities per the ILA agreed to build the shelter. Um as we've said before, the cost came in over the course of the cost estimates came in four years ago, five years ago now. Over the course of the that time, um obviously it's higher than estimated. Uh the cities certainly want to consider all options and opportunities for a cost-effective product project. Um and that's that's where all the cities are at. Another thing concerned came in, the cities have not funded their fair share of construction costs. All cities have appropriated funding that was estimated at the time of the original agreement. Uh obviously inflation for construction, uh methods, materials, site design were estimated higher. And and uh as we've stated before this evening, the cities are studying the options to meet this need in the most cost-effective manner.
Mr. Redkay?
Yes.
Uh when we uh talk about the cities uh studying the um the options, is there a deadline that we're looking at? Is there a kind of this uh where we're gonna be looking into this or is this like, no, we're wanting to figure this out by a certain timeframe?
We'll be getting into some of the next steps at the end, um and uh working with some of the cities there. Really, we're just. Taking these workshops to kind of assess what the councils are saying, get the information out to them. And uh having that guide our our decisions coming up. So I I really can't say, you know, we 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 plan on having a decision by. A a drop dead date, but uh it's definitely a high priority for all three cities. So from our meeting last week in Richland and and some of the some of the questions that have come up uh this evening too. Um some of the questions that's coming around from the city councils, obviously what is being done to further educate the public now? This is education that we're doing tonight, where the cities are are saying this is this is where the project is and this is what the animal control authority is uh about. And really just trying to bring forth our information to the public. But also it's working with the contractor and working with the organizations such as POP. Um to educate the public on the need for sheltering, the need for responsible pet ownership. Um the need for spay and neuter of animals in in that area. So really. Enabling our contractor to have those opportunities to do that is something that we would um we are working on. Um how are contractor responsibilities being addressed? Um we've been working with uh greater frequency of animal control authority meetings. Um obviously greater visits by the city to inspect the facility. And uh look at population trends and see what we can do to help uh as far as uh capacity and transfer and and agreements. In order to make sure that all the animals are cared for. But our shelter is um operated in a safe uh manner per the issuances or, excuse me, per the um. Uh tenants of our contract and and the needs of our ordinances. Um we did get a question last week, what is the animal per-square-footage ratio for the current shelter as well as the design shelter? Um I'm working on that information, so we'll be providing that to all three city councils in a in a report to come out after our workshops. Same with what is the community-wide capacity for housing animals. Um if you look around the community, we've got Benton County. Canine Shelter, which serves Benton County and the unincorporated areas. Some of the smaller cities like West Richland have one or two units for animals that they find within their jurisdiction. Same with the Benton Franklin Humane Society also serves a need in the community as well, in addition to the Tri-City Animal Shelter. So assessing that community-wide capacity based upon trends of population versus pet ownership. Um we'll be diving into, excuse me, diving into that data and getting back to you on that as well. Um same with Franklin County for animal control and sheltering. To be honest, that was something that never occurred to me, even though Pasco is within Franklin County. Um this question came to me late Friday, so um we'll be looking into what Franklin County does and 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 go from there. We'll get back to you guys on that. And then um we already addressed what is being done about educating pet owners in the communities, working with our contractors. And then um how many animals has the Tri-City Animal Shelter turned away due to capacity? That was not in the stats that I was given. Um I know that uh capacity is an issue there. So I'll be working with the contractor to get that question answered for you as well. Want to see what questions we get from the Pasco City Council this evening and really provide all the information at one time to all three city councils, so. So in closing, and I'm sure there's gonna be some questions and 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 comments from the council, but really we have two interlocal agreements. Um there's a number of interlocal agreements for animal shelter and enforcement here, but the two main ones. That are applicable this evening are the operations and enforcement of the Tri-City Animal Control Authority. And the um shelter for does or the the ILA for the design and construction. Of the new animal shelter. That's currently where we're at. The the ILA for design and construction outlines a one-third partnership for each city to participate. Estimates from over four years ago have increased from just over four million to now beyond six million dollars. City managers for all three cities have paused this interlocal agreement to build the animal shelter. In order to look at al- alternatives and project and our partnerships to find the most financially feasible means by which this need can be addressed. Obviously, this is before a determination to ask each city council for additional funding would be presented. We want to make sure that all alternatives are addressed. Um it's been four years of work, uh as Dave, uh excuse me, as uh city manager Zabel alluded to before. Uh there's uh new faces in our elected bodies for all three cities as well as new faces on staff. We want to make sure that we I address modern needs and approaches on a region-wide basis for this project uh for the next number of decades. So coming up, this is our second of three. There we go. This is our second of three city council workshops. We will be uh presenting this information to the Kennewick City Council tomorrow night in their council chambers at six thirty PM. We'll be taking this time, once the the workshops are are complete, we'll be taking the city council questions and concerns and addressing those. Providing those back and 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 most likely a written document to each city council. Um we'll be addressing additional concerns, uh questions and comments that have come in from the community and emails that we've received uh since this time. Be looking at the current plan versus the new concepts, uh be assessing um potential different locations for this area. And looking at our partnerships in the community as well. I know the three city managers will be meeting on um sort of the results of all three of these uh city workshops. And um we'll be looking to meet with the community as well and then uh come back to you, so.
Mr. Redkay, thank you for that presentation. It was a.
Thank you.
Long one, but uh well-needed. It was good for us to get a uh remind us of, you know, where we were and where we're at today. And um we'll start with a question. Mr. Mill?
So, thank you, Mayor. So my question was, so what if the other cities don't, like say, if say hypothetically, say Richland didn't want to pay their share? Then what do we do? I mean, obviously in two years, it's gone to two million dollars. That's a huge increase. I mean. Obviously, we don't want this being ten years from now and still talking about this. So, I mean, do we have a plan or how do we address that?
Let let me kind of respond to that. So the um. ILA regarding the building itself is, obviously, it's the second ILA that was uh approved December of twenty seventeen. So as as Zach said, we've pretty much been at this about three years. Uh it established a management committee, uh which is what Zach's referred to with the three city managers. And uh three city managers are tasked with guiding the project as a as a team. And uh so the first order of business was a feasibility study. That feasibility study, as Zach mentioned. Uh did come up with a lower number. Now, I I do want to address the lower number as uh. That was estimated about four million and it was an eight thousand square foot facility. And so your six million dollar number that Zach mentioned tonight, uh six point two million. That facility is just under eleven thousand. I think it's ten thousand. Six hundred, right in that range. So it is a bigger bit bigger facility. Uh but uh and we have three years of construction inflation. Uh we've had some discussions with the with the other two cities about that and that's frankly, that's part of the reason for the pause is to kind of take a look at. Okay, what are some options to six point two million dollars? I mean, can we refurbish a? And and we've gone out and looked. I mean, the last couple of months, last several months, we've been looking at different options. Uh one of those, we went to scraps over in uh, it's a facility over in uh Spokane County. And it was, and Zach, uh Director Redkay mentioned it earlier, it was um Old Harley dealership that they. Were able to purchase and convert. And it's got some drawbacks being converted and it took some money to. Obviously converted a flat floor and you're talking about animals. I mean, there's trenches had to be dug in the floor. And, you know, drainage put in place uh to deal with waste and things like that, but um. So we we've looked at the, we're we're in the process of looking at some of some of that as a feasibility. Uh and we've looked at a couple of different buildings in town uh with that in mind. Uh where where the potential of uh housing in another, u- using a third party to house, that's that's right now being evaluated. And then uh there's certainly the the option of a new facility still on the table and that's what the interlocal agreement's about. So roundabout way of answering your question. I I if we come to an agreement, we have, we are, we have through an ILA, we've come to an agreement on a on a um. Sharing in a new facility, if we decide to go another option, that's gonna be something that, you know, we'll all be chatting about.
Okay, and then I had a couple of questions. So um when you talk about the. Read or the land down by the current shelter, I know there's some people that do like that, because they said it's out of the way. There's not houses by it in case. You do hear dog barks and stuff. When you said it wasn't cost prohibitive, what, I mean, what are we talking, a million, two million or? What was not cost prohibitive?
I I think some of the some of the current concerns that were identified earlier in this was an alternate site down there. So it was, if council may recall, the original thinking for that project was to completely relocate. The footprint of the of the uh facility. And so you go to the, either to the north or or to the south, along the river there. Uh that land is lower and so there was concern about soils and they're concerned about high water. Uh I I don't think we've looked at that, you know, go going back and look at this now. I don't think we. Evaluated the the actual building on the same footprint site the way we should have. To be honest with you, and that's something we're going back and taking a look at at right now. Yeah, there's a couple of those. There's a couple of those um buildings that are there today that you could just wipe them out. It would impact operations. And we'd have to probably find some temporary. Housing for a time to make it work, but I think there I think there is a possibility of. Doing kind of a phased construction down there with a lesser building. I don't want to say less fancy. Uh but uh that that could could be an option we want to consider. And so that's that's a that's something that we're looking at and the and the management committee, the three city managers and the. The other folks working on the project uh will be talk discussing.
Okay, and then I know we talked about the the POP's grant, everything like that. Now, has the city also applied for grants? I mean, is there anything too that we can apply for grants to try to get the cost down through the state or? Is that an option?
Well, I I don't know. I mean, that's certainly something we could talk about. I don't know that there's a whole lot of. Uh grant opportunities for capital. The POP grant was for, it's more programmatic, you know, and it's to address the actual. Propagation, I guess, better word, lack of better word, of animals, you know, through proper management of them. From a reproductive standpoint.
Okay. Um and then you pretty much answered some of the other questions, so. Uh but so, I mean, like, all the money, how much? I mean, I don't know, maybe this is not a good question, but how much, do we know how much Kennewick and Richland are putting into this? I mean, I know we were talking basically two million each, but I mean, have they said what they want to pay or is that?
We 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 have not. We 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 have not, I think we're probably more at a point of, let's look at all the options first. And bring back the council, bring back to our councils, uh, a joint recommendation. So what what we what we did here, and it's, you know, I will say there's probably some some bias in it, because we are the um, administering agency. I I programmed two million dollars in your budget, knowing that that estimate was two million dollars. Knowing we still had a lot to talk about with the other agencies, so our our two million dollars, one-third share is in our budget. I don't think that's probably true of the other two cities right now, in terms of that that upper number, and part of that's because. The management uh, committee hasn't had an opportunity to sit down. Uh, once we had the, once we had the consultant's estimate, which was after budget. And uh, had the opportunity to to uh, come in and uh, reevaluate. That option as well as other options.
Okay, and the last question, uh, like, how long do we think this will? I know it's an open-ended question, but how long do we realistically think it'll be before? Something really like happens, I mean, are we talking like, we're ha- no one answer like this summer, are we talking late spring, are we talking?
Yeah, I I would say, I would think in the next, you know, I I I'm speaking on. My behalf, I have not consulted with the other two city managers about this, but I think, you know, theoretically, we could probably. Be close to a um, a recommendation of council, I think we'd have enough information probably within the sex, and that within the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Thank you, Mr. Mill, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, uh, just curious about the um. Engagement with stakeholders, and I know you sp- uh, men- mentioned that a little bit, but I'm just curious how. How that has uh, come about and um, and perhaps uh, um, yeah, how how is that an ongoing process? Or is at what point, um, you know, how, yeah, just that, we we have a lot of folks here who are very interested in this. And so I'm just curious how how that has uh, played out and how, um, has that uh, uh, given us uh, some some. Increased knowledge or things of that nature.
Yeah, I I will, y'all address that, and you know, Zach, feel free to jump in, but I, I think there was engagement early on. During the planning process, I think we talked to forty different uh, different folks uh, that were involved with the shelter. Uh, and I'll call that phase one. And so from that is kind of how the feasibility and design was built, or or uh, design of the of the new. Uh, facility was uh, developed. And once we have design out, and that's out in front of the community and we're we're starting to talk to folks. Uh, you know, maybe there's things we could have done different, but we're getting kind of a very active phase two uh, input from the community. Which has kept us awfully busy, you know, responding to, but it has actually been, I also been very helpful. And uh, and it's given us some 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 good information on which to go back and look at maybe some different alternatives. I I uh, uh, that and the, that and the actual cost itself, maybe there is a. Cheaper way to do than what the what the design demonstrated.
Well, and to to piggyback on that, uh, Councilman Alvarado, I I I I think also. Being able to tour different facilities and and looking at scraps up in Spokane County, looking at operations and design. Of the Humane Society and just even down to the materials used, I think can help guide us as we value engineer either this project or. Um, a future project as well, and it's it's been actually pretty eye-opening to see. Just how other shelters operate and some of their uh, uh, trials and tribulations versus some of their successes too. That's a, been some pretty good stakeholder outreach as well.
I I I'll note that our our ILA contemplated a new shelter. And so I I think that probably created a a bias on the process itself right from the beginning almost. We need to go out and build a brand-new building and uh, basically start from scratch, and I'm not saying that we. Shouldn't do that, but we, I don't think we, the ILA, the feasibility study did look at some of the community partners out there. Like possibility Benton County and possibility of Humane Society. And the recommendation out of that, which we took to all the councils, and I recognize uh. Mayor Martinez was the only one in the council left when we took that, that that's left on the council today. And which is one of the reasons why we have such a lengthy presentation tonight, to kind of give you all a little bit of background of how we got here and what ACA is even about. That that feasibility study and where the three city councils and the last policy direction. To the city managers has been build a facility, but also make sure that's something we want to build. Make sure it's gonna be efficient and cost-effective and come back to talk to us before you build it. And so that's kind of where we're at right now, is the coming back and talk to you part.
Yes, my, uh, what I'm hearing is a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel, as a so so whole, I'm really hoping that that's the case, so. Uh, few years from now, now we're looking at a much higher number and uh, still kind of a high need uh, in in our, in our city, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Maloney.
So I do recall that um, um, Mr. Zabel, that not only do we have this item in our budget, we've actually funded this through a bond sale. That we did like in December, is that, do I accurately remember that?
We did include it in the bond sales, in in the event we wanted to use bond proceeds for it, there are other projects we can. It's flexible enough that we could use it on other projects as well.
Sure, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I was understanding that we weren't just budget-wise, we're, we're not just saying it, we actually. Got the money for the increased share in case we needed that.
Yeah, the the money is there and ready to go.
Thank you, um. So obviously, we've heard uh, from a lot of volunteers and others who spend a significant amount of time, you know, caring for these animals um. At the shelter, and what I think I've heard repeatedly is that they are interested in less office space and more space for the animals. At least it's what I'm understanding from Nothing Fancy, Just Functional, is that, I can see an enormous amount of nods, I think I can get the wave going for this one. Can you speak at all to the the feasibility study that suggested that the increased administrative space was going to actually. Decrease the um, amount of need for kennel spaces? I think I understood that to be, um, it should increase the adoptions and therefore decrease the need for any peak amount of animals. I I don't, I I would like a lot more detail on that statement.
Sure, I think I think it, as we look at the slides of this evening's presentation, that the. There isn't a direct correlation between additional administrative space and additional adoptions, thus smaller kennel space. Things just worded that that additional space was included, I think the the main. Uh, point of the feasibility study was that a a newer facility, a modern facility that. Uh, didn't have the typical, you know, old shelter dog smell to it that was marketed really well. Uh, had good flow, people were comfortable working there, there was good customer service. Um, great location and the community would drive those adoptions, not necessarily having more administrative space. Um, when we look at administrative space, there is a, you know, some shelters like the Humane Society, it's shelter staff that's there. This facility also has to house um, animal control operations, our officers, it has to have a garage with. A closing door and kennels within that garage to, you know, before an animal is assessed if they're sick and contagious. Or if they're dangerous, they have to have an assessment before they get into the uh, the kennel population. Um, so I think that's where we looked at more administrative space, was really trying to design for that modern operation and our modern need of not only sheltering. But uh, enforcement operations. Instead of what we had, uh, you know, retrofitted a building from the nineteen fifties and nineteen seventies that had kennels there and we'll we'll throw an office over here. So there wasn't a direct cor- cor- correlation between administrative space and efficiency of uh, adoptions. But really, that was just included because that was added additional to the the building for its new operations.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that a little bit, so I I do hope that the part of the value engineering effort's going to be looking at that ratio of space. And determining whether or not we could save additional money and reduce the cost overall by removing some some um. Um, potentially extraneous space or um, converting it to a kennel space, if that's the right answer, because it sounds like. The people that are working there and spending a lo- again, a lot of time there are in favor of that sort of approach, and I think, um, it would be. It would be odd for us to force additional space uh, for the people if what their people really want is more space for the animals.
Certainly.
Um, and and finally, I just, I I guess I'm trying to, one thing I'm trying to understand is really what that capacity, what that, what that need for capacity is. Um, and we we, I believe in the previous slide, there was a little bit of question about that, um, perhaps we can revisit. The previous slide. Waiting one more back, there we go. So we talked about the community-wide capacity for housing animals, um, but perhaps more important to me is not the capacity, but the need. And what the demand is. I understand that the current contractor, uh, Cannon does hold animals beyond the legal requirements, so that they can potentially get adopted out after that, that hold time. As a good service to provide, but what is the capacity needed for just the required hold times, do we have? A good idea of how much our capacity is compared to the need, uh, I'm not sure I understand.
It fluctuates throughout the year, um, as we look at a need for stray animals, if you look at around July fourth with fireworks, more animals. Leave their yard and they're out stray, they get picked up, they're very active, um, there are certain times of year where there's not that many, so really, it's at any given time of the shelter. Um, depends on the capacity needs for that, so.
Sure, and I understand that, and typical operations allows for those sort of factors to be applied, so what I, I guess what I'm looking for is more numerically, how does this compare against the need? Um, and I, you may not have the answer right now, but if we can add that to the list of things that I would very much like to know. Do we hit capacity, are we passing, do we have a overflow capacity for temporary needs when, when, for example, Fourth of July and we have a lot of um. Um, runaways, eh, what is that, what is that in that capacity compared to our our need? Um, because I believe that's, that question really only gives us about uh, half the picture, so I'd appreciate that additional information as well when you get a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Roach.
And I would just like to piggy out, piggyback off that capacity uh, comment that. Um, you know, looking at the the brand-new facility and how many kennels it has, it's a reduced amount of kennel size compared to what we currently have. Even though square footage might be increased, but how does that reflect the? The projected growth that we have tri-cities wide and that we will have, um, and to go. Have a reduction in kennel space may not be fitting for our community, and that's just a comment that I have, but I do have a question about the process. Whether we come to brand-new site, brand-new facility, or rebuilding on the current site. Or going for a refurbishing an old building, whatever that, uh, that outcome is at the end. Will it require a consensus from the three city councils, or is it, where does that, where does that decision, final decision come from?
Yeah, the consensus we have right now is build a brand-new building, so if we're gonna do something different than that, we're gonna have to open up that ILA and and uh. And amend it uh, towards the preferred alternative.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we've had a great discussion, I do have one question that I wanted to just um, close in my mind. The current plan versus the new concepts, how are we including uh, the community in into the new designer? Is there an actual committee, or are they just, are we just getting it from the input that that's coming in?
Well, certainly throughout this time, we've been ref- um, receptive to the feedback of the community, whether it's direct emails. Um, it's the community approaching city councils in all three cities. We we, I I do monitor the Facebook group that has come up uh, with with the suggestions and the ideas. And and we've been responsive to numerous public records requests as well on the history of the project. Mr. Zabel and I have met with uh, sort of a consortium of stakeholders and the volunteer group and and groups of concerned citizens. Um, uh, in order to, you know, bring them into the conference room, let's discuss ideas, you know, what are your expectations? Here's some of our challenges, um, really just opening that communication. A- as uh, Mr. Zabel stated before, we're currently working with our managing committee. And the the current direction of the three city councils is to build a new shelter. Um, any changes to the makeup of that committee or anything like that would have to be addressed at that level.
Okay, well, I appreciate the council for these questions, I think it's been thorough, Mr. uh, Zabel. You know, obviously, the need is here, what would you recommend, what what time do you need so that the three city managers can get together? And um, perhaps take what you got instead of really getting more from everybody and moving forward on this project, because I know. I hope the community knows that the more, sometimes the more interaction that you want to give to prove your point. Uh, will actually be an impediment to keep things going forward, so what would would you recommend, uh, where can we go from here?
Well, and I, as I mentioned earlier, I I think we need, we need some time to properly evaluate all the, all the alternatives and then bring. A joint recommendation back to the councils, uh, there's some things we need to do right now, matter of fact, we have uh, some geotech work. Being done on a site, and we're also evaluating an existing structure uh, as well. So tho- those kind of analysis do take a a little bit of time, and that's why I suggested probably ninety to. To a hundred and twenty days, and we we should be in a pretty good position to give council and the public uh, a very good update. Director Reck, I mentioned that we've been meeting with uh, uh, some kind of a representative group of the stakeholders. We would continue to do that, to try to keep them informed and uh, and get input from them as well.
Well, we'll look forward to uh, to, you know, somebody, Mr. Toronto, go ahead.
Thank you, I say this with great hesitation, but in the event that uh, we do have to reconsider opening the ILA. We may want to consider expanding jurisdictions to include West Richland and the counties. Uh, of course, the more not the merrier, uh, when it comes to decision-making processes. That said, if it becomes a money issue, um, they're certainly part of the tri-cities, they're part of the committee. They are part of the problem and hopefully part of the solution, so. I put that way out there, because I know what would it take to, you know, what type of act of God we're looking at. But that might be one option if we come flat, so just throwing that out there.
And and I I I will note, just so councils aware, because again, all but one of you are on the council, then we did have those discussions. That was in two thousand sixteen, excuse me, two, yeah, two thousand sixteen, uh, uh, with West Richland. Uh, Benton County, I think feels pretty confident that they're doing what they need to do, they don't have a cat issue or they don't. It's it's rural, it's farmland, cats are like really very valued, those environments, so. So uh, Franklin County has not demonstrated an indifferent interest previously, happy to talk to them some more, but uh. Yeah, we, and we would continue to keep the door open for those, now there, I think there has been some recent interest uh, by one of the West Richland council members. But not from the, from the mayor of the the city officially.
All right, well, thank you very much, and uh, hope- hopefully we we get some more uh, communication and and move this forward. Thank you very much, uh, the council, would you guys like to take a five-minute recess now, or, because we got another big topic ahead of us, so. Uh, we are gonna take a five-minute recess, we'll be back at, uh, let's see, at eight fifteen, thank you. Uh, we are gonna take a five minute recess, we'll be back at, uh let's see, at eight fifteen, thank you. Okay, we're back into our uh meeting, city council meeting, our work study session. So next on the agenda is uh parking code updates and we have a presentation. Uh, let's see here. From Chief Ken Roski.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, council members, as you know. Vehicles abandoned or left on the roadways is a challenge for the neighborhoods and establishing a good quality of life. And a clean uh clean working environment for uh for for people in the neighborhoods as well as uh the commuting public. So, in our in our efforts a few years ago to clean the uh the ordinance up, we made great progress. And uh since then, we've had an opportunity to put that ordinance in effect and we've had that out for a few years now. And our working group, uh which included our officers, city, uh other city staff and the city attorney. Have identified some uh other areas in that ordinance that they think would even make it more streamlined. And more e- more efficient for uh for enforcement of of those vehicles. Part of that would be a shortened time period that it requires for an officer um tagging a vehicle and waiting. The the extended time period before it could actually be moved and then shortening up uh or or establishing some cleaner lines. For how the officer makes contact, he has to actually observe that vehicle before he starts the process. And then um um in in cases where he can contact the actual uh owners or make attempts to. To get them notified to move those, there were some legal uh changes to that. That the city attorney can certainly clean up if there's some additional questions, but will uh certainly open this up for uh for questions from council i- if you have any.
Okay, uh Mr. Alvarado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um yeah, I I. Uh forgive me if I'm a little bit ignorant as far as the history of this, uh my understanding is that the the uh amount of days was increased a few years back. Is that, is that, is that correct, am I remember that right?
That is correct, I I believe it uh took forty seven days from the uh from the observation point. To actually have a vehicle removed.
What was that increase from?
It it went from seventy two hours. Prior, years prior to that.
Okay, yeah, um I mean, this is something I, you know, we we deal with quite a bit in my my neighborhood, I'm sure most most neighborhoods here, but it seems uh. And and I understand that there's a sense of like uh, uh you know, if someone's out of town and they leave their car, things like that. And so I get that too, but it seems pretty long and we have these cars kind of just in there. And so I know that we're not necessarily addressing that here, but I'm just curious, uh is if that's something that's also being considered as you're trying uh cleaning this up. To to decrease that or or to kind of have some somewhere in between that long term and.
Right, simply having the the vehicle there isn't gonna draw the attention, it would be other factors that a vehicle doesn't move. For those time time periods, uh officers could re- there there are several ways they could get that, it might be a a complaint. Uh from from the from a neighboring community, might have debris, uh flat tires, uh broken windows, those kind of things. That we need to get them tagged and get them out of a out of out of a neighborhood uh from a eyesore and a quality of life standpoint.
Uh as far as uh folks who are um kind of, I guess, uh for lack of better word, are playing the game where they though. They have a non operational car, they push it to whatever inches or feet and then and then they push it back, is that there's no real repercussion to that?
So so this ordinance does, that's one of the uh things that this ordinance does address is the feet that it has to be moved and the durations. That it has to be moved now, so to try and clean some of those uh those quick catch guards that people might wanna. Wanna simply just pu- push the push the vehicle an inch or two and call that good.
If they were to park it across the street and then park it be, but but and that's allowed on their.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it it as long as it falls outside of, I think it's the the twenty foot um time span within the 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 number of of hours, so yeah. Mo- re- really just keeping the veh- vehicle moving and using it is, if if that's if that's what you're doing with the vehicle, that's perfect. But if you're just uh using the city right away, city streets to um to house vehicles. Uh because you have no place else to put them, um they're Hulk vehicles or just vehicles that you wanna store. That's not the best place to store and that's that that's what we're trying to avoid.
Thank you, and then uh one last thing, just perhaps for uh public uh to to know what what's, uh so say I I um or. Member of the community wanted to um to uh make a complaint, what what would be the best way, place to do that? Code enforcement or uh non emergency number or?
Oh, oh, uh so they they can call the police department at the non emergency number. Um, and uh this this actually might be something that we look at the three one one system for for reporting down the road, so.
So they will just need to give you the address where this car is?
Today, that's how we receive them, um from an efficient standpoint, the track and online system. Uh uh or they they would call the department, I suppose code enforcement probably field some of them too and then we get them as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um chief, I I do have some questions, there's some continued concerns in this. Um noting that my my neighborhood is has, we'll say, very, very few um driveways. Um and has very few garages, so when I'm looking at the timelines here, I'm looking at if someone was gone for a week. Um visiting some family, um that their they could come back and their car would be towed. Um now, just based on a co- on a complaint, an observation by an officer and such, but when I'm looking at seventy two hours. On top of a twenty four hour, I'm I'm looking at, someone could be gone for less than seven days. Uh parked in um in the street, on the street that they live and um have their car towed. And I would, that that causes me great concern, um because this isn't, this isn't necessarily gonna be the case in all parts of town. Um but certainly is, could be the case in others, so could you could you talk me through a little bit there, because I'm I'm, I I I'm I'm. I've also seen a number of clearly abandoned vehicles that are up on blocks and need to go, like so I'm I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that we need to let people park wherever they want for as long as they want, but. There has to be a healthy balance here and I'm I'm concerned that we're on the lower end of that healthy balance.
Right, and that's certainly why we wanna have this conversation, so the first thing that has to start is the. The the observation of violation period has to be by an officer, so we can't simply take somebody's word. That that vehicle's been there for the twenty four hour period before we start the clock ticking. Um, so then after that, that officer has observed that vehicle being there for twenty four hours. And uh uh then that process can begin and uh I don't know if the city attorney has anything additional to add on to on to those.
Yes, uh just, so we're all kind of clear as well, this is a uh uh what we like to affectionately refer to as a Frankenstein ordinance. In the sense that you're really adding on a whole new provision onto your already existing ordinance, if you look on uh number four. That's where your old ordinance used to begin, so we're adding on this first uh section, which really is uh changing kind of the framework. Of what is defined as an abandoned vehicle and then you move to the second part of that and decide whether that's either A or B. Uh under uh definition of unauthorized vehicles, so the first thing you do is define it as abandoned, something that's been there for more than twenty four hours. Um and uh and parked in a certain location and then once that starts, then it can go forward and have the other timeline start to kick in. So, that's what been has been the process of trying to meld what we used to have with regard to days. And then it's these uh new requirements that uh we're trying to go forth, but uh the other process is such that. Uh the the initial officer has to be able to have witnessed that vehicle uh being uh in that location for uh at least twenty four hours. Before that clock even starts with regard to the to the seventy two hours. But you'll also notice that the, especially in section four there, it looks like the um. The timeline uh previous uh related to no person shall park on a vehicle on a street municipal property for a period uh time longer than fourteen days. That's been now uh moved down to uh one hundred and twenty hours or five days, so uh and that. The that was at the request of uh the the police department work group and so that was uh what they were proposing, but uh clearly that's just a proposal. But uh so yeah, there are a few inconsistencies and we we were able, based on uh Councilman Maloney's uh questions, we were able to uh locate some more of the inconsistencies. It's funny, after you look at things several times, you you don't even see some of the things, so uh, um but yeah, so it's 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 a work in progress, but uh. Really, at this point, it's a matter of, we need some direction, um you know, um you know, about uh how the council wants to proceed. With regard to timelines, because we really need to make sure all of these add up. Uh so that we have some very definite enforceable timelines, so really this is an opportunity for us to get some direction from you and. And really figure out uh where y'all want us to be.
Yes, so so just from my perspective, again, when I look at the 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 minimum timeframes and I add them up, I get a really short timeframe. Where someone from out of town has come up to visit, they go on a vacation up to, um you know, spend a week out of town with a California license plate, which is. We'll say not uncommon um in Pasco, in a week their their car could be gone and that that seems. I just, I don't I don't see how that's fair or reasonable as a way of enforcing our code, now that being said, when you look at like fourteen days. Um as part of it, and we look at a total uh total cycle time of forty seven days to have moved a vehicle twenty feet or or less. I mean, obviously, that's all, that's on the other end of of perhaps ridiculous, so. I I I guess I feel like we may not be at that balance point right here, at least for my preferences and what I think would really negatively affect my community and I would, I would, I would hate to. To get in the place where we're we're doing something that the community sees as maybe malicious, I'm not, that's that's not. That would, I know that would never be the intent, but I it could feel very punitive, I think, to a segment of the community that simply doesn't have the luxury of having a driveway. So I'd appreciate um maybe some some additional consideration of what those timelines look like and whether or not this is maybe a little bit too stringent for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, uh Mr. Roach.
I was curious about vehicles, would this include um definition of vehicle, a trailer and an RV? A boat, um any of those such?
No, tho- tho- those would be under a different ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief Roski, this is in regards to uh partly in regards to what Mr. Maloney said. Um, the vehicles being parked out there, um in certain areas, it's different type of vehicles. And it's not necessarily someone visiting from out of town, um should the neighbor or the person that first observed that. Vehicle being abandoned there wait two, three days before calling it in? Um, I know RVs are uh different ordinance. Um, and Ms. Roach just mentioned the boats and stuff like that, but like I said, in certain areas of our city. We have different types, different groups of people that use vehicles differently. And so, when should be, when should someone call in a uh an abandoned vehicle? Or something blocking the the way?
So so typically, those calls come into us from concerned neighbors, uh unless it's obvious by an officer driving by. Or I suppose maybe a code enforcement officer that sees an obvious debris vehicle up on uh on blocks. Um, flat tires, those kind of things uh draw attention to us and that's typically the same thing that uh. Community members will report to us, not so much that the vehicle um is there for X amount of days. It's more that it isn't being moved and it's starting to become an eyesore into their neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, yes, so I do believe five days for that type of uh um nuisance is is reasonable. Um, again, it's like you said, it's an eyesore, creates an eyesore for other neighbors and you never know what's going on. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alvarado.
Uh yeah, can you, um, oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh Mr. uh Mr. Roski, can you speak a little bit to uh stolen vehicles and how that differs from from this?
So there are pro- there's provisions uh towards the end of the uh of the ordinance, which uh puts all of this to the side. If it's a, if it if it is a hazardous or there are specific uh ordinances or or specific laws for stolen vehicles. That we can take into custody or a vehicle that is um creating a hazard for some reason, whatever that might be. These, this does not apply and we could uh impound those immediately.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you, um, can you walk me through number nine real quick? Uh talks about the general procedure of placing the sticker for twenty to twenty four to seventy two hours.
I can take that.
And then it talks about contacting Pasco registered vehicles.
So, that is a uh, it's funny, that that is one of the remnants that we're struggling with, that doesn't actually fit in with. The provisions that are from our former ordinance, the notice to owner, those uh. Those, if you look at the notice to owner under number seven, that actually is a lot of the same redundant language and doesn't really quite fit in. It goes with the new language that we're trying to adopt, but that's where that got put in originally through the work group, is to try to make sure that it, it had a relief mechanism. But as we're going through and trying to literally walk through and apply this, it doesn't fit.
Okay, yeah, I was kind of trying to figure out which, which part of the stitching that was. But the second component of that, I do appreciate where it says prior to removing the vehicle, the registered owner, the, the police officer is supposed to contact the registered owner. Can you just talk about that real quickly, I guess, chief?
Right, right. The intent is to obviously clean up the eyesores and even if an officer has the opportunity to try and track down the owner within reasonable means, that they give, that they give people the opportunity themselves to get that vehicle cleaned up and out of there with, within the timeframes. A lot of times people get busy with their lives and don't realize that it's a flat tire, that it, that they aren't moving it. And they'll make provisions once we make contact with them and point out from a quality of life standpoint that they can get that vehicle up and moving or get it out of there and oftentimes they'll find places to move them.
Thank you, Mr. Rosky, Mr. Maloney.
If I could just say one more thing, I think one of the, one of the issues, and this might address one of the questions that came up earlier. This, this proposed ordinance in its current form doesn't make a distinction between an abandoned vehicle. If you look at definitions portion, it doesn't really make a distinguishment between abandoned vehicle and automobile Hulk, which I think is a key distinction that we're trying to make here, which is one is clearly visibly abandoned because it's on blocks or some other, I guess, has some other look to it that's obvious. But at this point, I think that's maybe one of the issues here is that we're not really distinguishing between those two.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Ferguson, I think you're hitting the nail right on the head. Cause when I look at this, under the definitions of abandoned vehicle, it says means any vehicle or Hulk left to in the right-of-way of any public street for a period of twenty-four hours. So saying if I park the car on my street in the public right-of-way in a parking spot along the sidewalk for twenty-four hours, hour twenty-four plus one minute, my vehicle is now considered an abandoned vehicle, which I think is very, I think we're reading these things very differently. When we're talking about a Hulk that is, where it's, you know, car up on, on jacks, going through a process that starts at that point in time where, you know, the, the engine's been removed from the vehicle, things like that. I think that, maybe that, maybe that's my issue is that I'm hearing that we're going to treat a fully functioning car that's just parked there for twenty-four hours and one minute. The same was we could be treating a car that is legitimately abandoned and is non-functional. And maybe perhaps there's a distinction that could be made there to make this more palatable to just everyday people who are parking on the street.
Right, no, we, yeah, we appreciate that and I think that's really kind of a, a baseline for, if you don't even meet that definition, you don't even get to any of the other provisions. But I, I, to that point, I still don't think that we get near the timeline that you're alluding to. We're still only talking like six days, potentially. So that's still not far enough, it sounds like.
For an abandoned vehicle that is a functioning vehicle as opposed to make a distinction of a Hulk vehicle where after a week of it sitting there, I think we're all be interested in making sure that that goes away. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, my, my guess is that unless you have a neighbor who really wants to mess with you, my guess is that vehicles have been sitting there for about a month before people get annoyed enough to say, oh, I gotta call this in. And so the forty-two days on, on top of the whatever period of time may seem really excessive for the public to have this car. And so my, my, but that's my, my guess is that there's probably a, a longer period of time than this that's, that has already happened before the, the forty-seven days can take effect. So I, I remember cars in my neighborhood being there a long time that were clearly just trashed and, you know, it, the community was like, okay, fifteen days more, you know, count, counting the days till this thing can be removed. So I definitely see the, the need for this and that's why I, I, I'm like, man, that's a long time. So that's kind of my, my perspective on that.
Yeah, yeah, let, let us take this input and I'll work with the city attorney and see if we can make some clear distinctions to maybe address, excuse me, address both of your concerns and clarify the Hulk vehicle a little better to establish those, those eyesores, but yet give a little more time so that functioning vehicles don't necessarily get wrapped up into this inadvertently.
Right, I appreciate that, Mr. Rosky. And my, my comment in, my comment in this is, would be, cause I was concerned about the time myself and, and you'd mentioned messing around, some, some people are just not very nice, okay? And I mean, let's not beat around the bush. And then one, one of the things that I'm concerned about, Mr. Rosky, is that, you know, this is complaint driven and when the officer shows up to the person's house who perhaps the tire went flat and let's just say it was a week and he might move the, the vehicle a little bit. I guess what I'm getting at is he'll come around and say, well, what about this guy and this guy and this guy and this guy? And it might kind of create this domino effect of taking valuable, you know, police time into just, you know, patrolling people's cars in their, in their, in their, in front of their houses. And I am kind of concerned about that. So, but I, I, I'm glad I kind of waited because I think if we do kind of, you know, define that Hulk versus, you know, just somebody who wants to, you know, be in, be not in a good neighborhood and then open up the can of worms for a lot of other people who are doing something similar, that's what I'm trying to avoid here.
Absolutely, let us look at that then and the city attorney had some suggestions as well, so.
All right, thank you very much. One last question?
One last question, chief. How does this align with those individuals that happen to live in a vehicle and just parked on the side of the street somewhere in a neighborhood?
So that's, that's a whole different challenge for us. We work closely with our partners in code enforcement to address those, but those wouldn't necessarily, may or may not wrap up into this, but this doesn't address those being used as living facilities.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. So this is probably not going to go on, not going to go on next week's agenda. So, so we're, we're looking forward to, to getting some updates and see what we can work with that, Mr. Rosky. Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, then we'll go to our last item in our workshop meeting is based on code publishing recommendations and, and Eric, Mr. Ferguson?
Great, thank you. Yeah, so this is the first of five, what we like to refer to as omnibus ordinances. These are ordinances that we'll be bringing to you to fix things that were in the code. We switched over to code publishing a while back, gosh, I think it's been about a year and a half now. And it's been a great change, it's, it's been super helpful. But these are, we essentially had about a hundred and forty things that were in our code that needed to be addressed that could not be addressed through what we like to refer to affectionately as Scrivener's errors, which are essentially just mistakes and that can be fixed. These actually have to come to council and be fixed and so that's what this ordinance is, is, is changing, making some substantive changes to your code. They're, they're very perfunctory, but they have to come to you for, for changing. So if you have any questions about any of them, they seemed fairly, I guess, obvious or benign, but happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a question for ordinance, ordinance five about vehicles that are impounded. Says only the legal owner or registered owner, or is, is a person authorized to, I guess, claim a vehicle? Let's say in the, in the case of a person not being able to make, perhaps being incarcerated or being in a different country or things of that nature.
What section are you on, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I meant, I guess it's ordinance five, so it would be section nine, one, three, five, oh, three, oh. Section A one, AI.
Okay.
And so, yeah, just a question, question, what, what did that change from? Was it, would, would you be able to designate someone else to go pick up your car now? That's not, no longer the case?
Uh, no, there's been no change there. These, the only changes in this code would be anything that is either underlined or strike through.
Gotcha.
So that, that's been there and that's going to stay there because it really, yeah, right. I mean, what's the alternative? Not much. So, yeah, we definitely want to keep that language.
Okay, so that's RCW.
Yep, that's, we're, we're currently using that and, and we would want to keep it that way, I think.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now this, this will be in next.
Yes, it will. This one I can bring back.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Any other, any more questions from the council?
I feel tempted to read the owner responsibility one out loud just because of its sheer hilarity about fugitive dust control in ambient air. Did anybody read that one? Yeah, that one was pretty funny. About any person owning a site, whether vacant or developed in the city of Pasco, should be responsible for employing the best control methods and the best available technology to prevent the release of fugitive dust into the ambient air. And I mean, I think that's pretty hard to lock down someone for not being able to do that.
Well, believe it or not, I got a citation when I was building my house on that very subject, so it's kind of a sore subject for me.
Well, yeah, you have to put hydro seeding or something to prevent if you're developing, you kind of create all kinds of things, that's definitely an issue.
Yeah, I, I won't even go to that, so.
We're gonna bring up fugitive tumbleweeds as well?
Yes, that's what I was about to say. Do, can, do we work in tumbleweeds in there as well? Nobody's taking me seriously right now.
Mr. Alvarado, you?
No.
All right, well, thank you very much, council. Next, miscellaneous council discussion. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
I just wanted to pay a compliment to Parks and Recreation. They had last Friday a moms and sons night and they put in an incredible amount of work. It's my second time taking my son. It's so much fun, it's such a blast, there's so many little kids. They do a balloon drop at the end. The CBC baseball team, boys' baseball team, they help coordinate all of the sports events that you play there and it's just, they do an incredible job. So I just wanted to thank them for putting that on for us. It's, it's a great, great time for moms and sons.
Awesome, that's great. Thanks for sharing that, Zara. And I would also just want to make a comment. I drive on Argent every day and the fence came, the construction fence came down on the new hotel and things are looking really good there by the airport. Very excited about that and also cleaned up a little bit of that, of the, of the area in between on, on twentieth street there and looking forward to having some really nice things go put up there as we go further into the spring. So really excited about that and a lot of other good things are happening in Pasco. So anybody else have any miscellaneous? Mr. Zabel, anything you want to add?
None this evening.
Wonderful. So with that said, there is no need for an executive session tonight and so we're going to move right on to number seven. And if there's no further comment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.